Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Hole for December 16th. The Clerk could please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
President.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yeah.
Councilmember Washington?
Yeah.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yeah.
Councilmember Garza?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Dunbar?
With that, we have a quorum. At this time, we have the minutes from December 2nd. Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor?
Madam President, excuse me. I move the minutes from December 2nd, 2019.
I have a motion on the minutes. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, pose passes unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to make public comment, this is your opportunity to do so. If you could please, excuse me, come to the mic, give us your name for the record, and then you will have your three minutes.
Loretto, stand away, and I just have one question on the Brownfield data sheet. First off, I'd like to say thank you for finally getting that information together and making it public. But my question is this, it showed 71% completed or active projects and 29% incomplete or inactive. How does that ratio compare to other municipalities of our size? Are we doing good? Are we doing bad? Are we in the middle range? I would like to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we will move on. Our first is a presentation by the Public Service Department on road project updates. Councilmembers, you have at your seat an overview of those, and Mr. Kilpatrick is here to make that presentation. Welcome, and if you'd make sure the green light is on, we'll let you start, and we will stop you as we have questions. So, Mr. Kilpatrick.
Right. Thank you, Council President Wood and councilmembers, for this opportunity to present a summary of our road projects that we've completed from June of this year through kind of the end of the construction season. So, we will, since our construction season really spans a fiscal year, we're going to go kind of calendar year or construction season year when we do these summaries unless there's a reason to change it to fiscal year. And what I, what you have in front of you is a brief summary, and what I'm looking for from councilmembers, if there is a way you think this should be presented that makes more sense to the public in how we do this and how we describe these treatments, we're more than willing to do that, and whether it makes sense to, to break out between construction and engineering, this is all lumped together, so this is the total cost for the program or the projects, as well as we did not have funding source in here, but we can do that as well, so we can talk about whether it's federally funded, or Act 51, our gas tax fund, or our millage funds, those are all pieces of information that we can have. But so, the overview of the 2019 treatments you have, they are by type of treatment. So, crush and reshape is really where we kind of grind up the road, reshape it, and then pave over the top of that. So, it's close to a reconstruction, however, we don't take everything away. We reuse what we grind up there as the base, and then we pave on top of that. So, with that, we had eight projects for about 1.4 miles, a million and a quarter on that. Fog seal, this is something that I probably, I don't expect anyone to know what the heck it is, but we basically take an asphalt emulsion, like you do with your driveway, it's a little thicker, we put that down on the road, we put some small chips on there, and then we seal that in with another layer of emulsion on the top. So, Jody, for example, Fernwood, that's what was done there. They were done around the city. It's a little rougher treatment, so you look at that and say, why is this road rough? It is not new asphalt, it looks like an entire new road surface, and the intent of that is to fill in some of the cracks that have been developing and seal that so you do not get water down in there, and that is not, you cannot do that on all types of roads. It's really, you're going to look at the road and say, why did we do this there? It is to preserve that before we need to do significant treatment on there. It's more cost-effective to get things done early versus waiting until it has to be a whole new layer of asphalt or fully reconstructed. So, you may see or hear from residents, why are we taking care of this road? Mine is completely falling apart. Well, just with a house or a car, if you don't maintain it up front, it's going to cost a lot more down the road. We don't have a lot of extra money for roads, so we want to take care of our assets that have not completely failed yet. And so, we will see more of those low-cost treatments as we go forward, and the roads that have, that need a full reconstruct, we will keep them safe until the point that we can fully reconstruct those, but they may be a patchwork of pothole, we just keep filling just because that road has completely failed and we can't do some of these treatments. So, then going down.
Mr. Kilpatrick, we have a question from Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick, for being down here tonight, and I do appreciate Mount Hope, going into East Lansing now, it's, it's really nice to drive down that road, but there is some concerns. Now, there's a seam in the middle of the road. Is that typical? I know some of the neighborhood residents are concerned that moisture's going to get in there and expand, and you know, in the winter months.
Right. So, whenever we do paving, there will always be some type of cold joint, and that's where basically you pave one direction, come back and pave the other, and those are generally along the lane line, but that's where some of the first thing that you'll actually see is that we'll come back and crack seal. So, that's what you do early on. Sometimes that's as early as the first year, second year, third year, so that's something we'll go back and look at. We do have a warranty on these, so if there are issues where the pavement is not the way it was supposed to, we can go back to the contractor and say, hey, this is not how it's supposed to be, you need to come up with a fix to address that. So, are you talking about the one on the east, the east side, right, from Aurelius to east city limits, or the one we did at the west?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
And what is the warranty for that?
So, we have a year is what we have on ours, other than concrete. When we have concrete sidewalks, that's three years. You've probably heard a lot about warranties at the state level, and longer warranties there, and what you find, just like, a warranty is like insurance, so you're paying for that one way or the other. So, we go through materials testing anytime we do this, same way MDOT does it, so when the asphalt comes out, it has to be placed at a certain temperature, it has to be the certain, the mix, the design. We check, check the density of the base before we pave. The problem with a lot of these, you're not going to be able to have someone warranty something if you don't replace the entire surface. So, if we have junk underneath we're paving on top of, no contractor in their right mind is going to say, I'm going to warranty my pavement on top of something they did not put down. So, that's, that's why our, our standard warranty, and this is whether we use local funds, or we go through in federal funds which are done by MDOT, we follow the same process and procedure for all of those.
Thank you.
Yep. So, mill and resurface, that's when we take some level of pavement off, it's usually somewhere between an inch and a half and three and a half inches, and then we put that back in place. That's more of an interim fix, that if the road is having some issues on the top, but the base underneath is still good, we'll take that asphalt off and put it back in place. So, Mount Hope is one of those projects. Capital would be another one that we did that was a mill and resurface, and those we try and adjust the amount, the depth of that to the length of time that we expect to come back. So, for Capital Avenue, we have not done sewer separation downtown yet, so we did not want to do a long-term fix there. That will be probably a six to 10-year fix, and at that point in time, we'll be coming back through for sewer separation, and the road would be completely reconstructed at that point in time. I mean, we're doing that around the city, as we know, the schedule for our sewer separation, we try and figure out the length of time for the fix and have it so that the pavement will last until we're just coming in there with sewer separation.
Councilmember Garza? No, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. So, when you talk about like schedule and coordinating with sewer separation, are you coordinating with McLaren when they go to do Forest Road? I know they're going to be putting in a new water service main and sewer main.
So, with McLaren, they are doing a section of Forest Road where they have to do sewer, upsizing the sewer because it doesn't have the capacity, and the same thing for Water Main. They will be doing a large section of that, but we are looking at the sections McLaren is not doing to decide whether we will do that at the same time they will, or at some future date. Right now, we try and schedule our major street project out several years, and we do not have that, or did not have that, in our, say, three-year plan, but we are looking at the section of Forest Road, and then also Collins Road, it leads down to Dunkel, which is being impacted by that project, to see if that's something that we could coordinate at the time McLaren is, is doing their work, or after, or just after it, before the hospital opens.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So, next fix we have down there is overlay, and that is basically not taking any of the existing asphalt off, we just put a thickness of asphalt on top of that, that's generally between an inch and an inch and a half of new asphalt. It kind of gives you the same life as the mill and resurface, however, you don't have the cost of milling off the asphalt, so it actually gives you a thicker pavement section. And then, the most expensive is reconstruct, and so anytime we're in there with a sewer, sewer separation project, those are typically complete reconstructions, where from curb to curb, and a lot of times including all of the curb, that all comes out, it's an entirely new road. So, you'll see that for the majority of the CSO areas, some other areas that we're doing with our forces or contracting out, and as you can see kind of by the cost per mile, it's over a million dollars a mile to do that type of treatment, where some of the other ones are a couple hundred thousand dollars a mile, so we have a, a mix of treatments. So, all total, it's about 14 miles of road that we've addressed, and a little over $12 million in, in project costs for that. For the 2020 projects?
Just a second. Vice President Spatafor?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Kilpatrick, in the reconstruction, you mentioned a majority are, are CSO streets, and looking at the list of the reconstruction, a lot of them were, I assume, the cost for the total CSO projects not reflected in these dollars, correct? This is just the street work?
Correct. This is the road cost, so the sewer cost is, is not.
Not reflected there, okay. Thanks.
Yeah. And there's, there's a little bit of gray area that do we do, do we include the curb and gutter costs that are, that's necessitated because of CSO? We would not have necessarily done that with a road project, but it is part of the road asset versus a sewer asset. So, those are things that we can figure out what makes the most sense when we move forward, and how we.
When you, if I may.
Go ahead.
When you do a reconstruct on CSO project like that, do you use the CSO money for the curb and gutter, or is that the road, or is that case-dependent?
Anything that is influenced by the trench need for the sewer work is paid for by the sewer fund. Anything outside of that is paid for by road funds, or if we have Board of Water and Light or Consumers in there, we prorate that, so if, if there's part of the trench that we're, we were in, and part of it they would have been in, and it overlaps, we kind of split that down the middle, so we just prorate that by who is affecting that. We could go through and say, well, CSO has taken care of three-quarters of the road, we're not touching the rest of it, that makes no sense, so that's why we will use some local road money so that everything is done at that point in time. Majority of the curb and gutter cost is paid for by CSO, because obviously if we're going through with the road, unless the curb is shot, we would not be removing it. So, in general, we don't remove a whole lot of curb when we're doing just a road project.
And the question I would have is, of the $6,500,000, that includes just the road money, not the CSO portion that would pay for it, correct?
I would confirm that, but that is, I believe that is correct, because the sewer project, the CSO project there was 12-plus million dollars for the CSO work in that area.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. This is probably a silly question, but I'm just curious, you know, when you do the road construction, and you, you come in the neighborhood, and you reseed and regrass, is that, I mean, who, who does that?
So, that, if our forces are doing the road work, then we have our grounds folks do the reseeding. In general, if we have a contractor do it, then the contractor is doing that, plus if we have tree removal or tree planting, that is all handled within the contract. So, it's, it's really case-dependent on who's doing the work.
Okay. Just a follow-up question, and, because I've gotten a lot of complaints and emails about the quality of the restoration that you guys are doing, you know, that, and, and so I'm, I'm always curious as to how that works. I mean, you put down like a sand mixture and some grass, and do you notify the residents that they're in charge of watering and upkeep? I'm just, I'm just curious on how that works, because I have, as you, as we've gone through and we've heard some complaints, gone through and, and seen some of the areas, and it looks like you're growing, we're growing a lot of weeds versus a lot of grass, so I'm just, I'm just, just confused.
Mr. Kilpatrick, before you answer that question, are you using the policy that was adopted some years back when Mr. Verge was here, that we had for the CSO work that we brought in MSU on? If, if that is, if you could add that into your comments.
So, for restoration, we are following the same policy we, we established for CSO, and I know 100% for that with CSO areas, we do either send something or a door hanger that tells people when it is seeded, what their responsibilities are. For example, for, until it's established, they're not supposed to mow that, but once it reaches a certain height, then they can mow it. There are mulch blankets down there, and a lot of times when, again, once that reaches a certain height, then they can mow. That netting is there to keep the seed and everything down, those can be pulled up. We've had complaints with people saying, well, it gets caught around my mowers, or the stakes are still in there, and those are things that we can look at and address. And yes, we do get complaints about weeds. We do have a specified mix that goes in there. If there's dormant weed seed in there, there's only supposed to be a small percentage, but depending on the soil type and everything, yeah, we can have those issues, and when they do arise, if the resident will let us know, then we can come out there and address that with the contractor to go back, or if our forces did it to, to take care of that area.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Before you go on to 2020, one of the things you'd asked about was formatting, and I, and I do know that when we look at the list of projects, we go to the backside and we see them all itemized out, but it might be good when you present these to tell us how many in what wards. We always get those questions, and it's not as if there aren't enough roads with issues out there, that I'm sure that we can find one in, in each of the wards that might be helpful as well.
And we can also, what we have in our website is we have a map, and so, we can do, have the same information, so all of those lines are on our map, and though people then can see what's, what's in their area as well.
Okay.
But we can add, again, whatever comments of additional information, we have all that information, but sometimes it's, it's more than people want or need to know, but let us know what you think is important, and we'll add that to this.
I think, Councilmember Hussein has a question, but I also think that, again, we deal with a lot of people that are not accessing the website, and have problems on the website, so if we were to print something like this off and give it to them, that would be helpful for us as we pass out that information.
And just anticipating another concern, because we do have so many, you know, so many miles that are a part of these 54 projects, it would be, and I don't know how difficult it would be to, to break this down, but to actually know the, the number of miles in each ward, and then the percentage of the overall, the overall miles in that ward, so that we're comparing apples to apples, because obviously the number one thing we hear when we go out, and I think I actually remember Andy talking about this quite a bit in 2017 when he, he was campaigning, is that every ward feels like they are in some way being neglected, you know, with regards to the treatment of the other ward. So, it'd be really good to, and I think scientifically, it would just be nice to be able to see what we're doing ward by ward, and maybe, maybe we do need to make, make some adjustments, maybe there is some merit to some of those concerns we're hearing out there.
We can certainly do that, and I know in a given year, we try and balance around the city. We don't look specifically by ward to say we have 25% each ward. We look at what the appropriate treatment is, and we sometimes will group like projects in the area, just because it doesn't make sense to have a contractor or the city forces mobilize in one area and do the same treatment around, you know, at the other corner of, of the city, but that is something we do try and balance, balance around. But we follow an asset management approach, and we basically look at what the appropriate treatment might be for an area, so just because a certain ward has different miles, I don't know if miles are more important, or if the overall ranking or rating of the streets is more important, dollars invested, the miles invested, there's a lot of different ways we can, we can kind of look at how we're, we're doing that, but we're more concerned with our overall street infrastructure as an asset, but we can certainly report that and divvy it up, however, you know, people want to digest that and present it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jackson?
You mentioned the ratings, street ratings, and I think that's one thing you could add onto a graph like this for the public, just to show if it goes from like a three to a five, or a three to a seven, or whatever that may be. The other, I guess, question I have is, so it is always tough to look at, you know, like one mile, one million something dollars, and just think of like that part of the street in a huge city. Have we, and I know you do a great job, because I came to all your public meetings, and the way that you analyze and do the asset management is, I think you do a great job, but have we looked at any radical ideas, like plastic streets or anything like that?
Anytime those are presented to us, we do look at those as a possibility. A lot of those engineers and maybe accountants by nature are fairly conservative, and these are all new ideas, and we don't want to necessarily be on the bleeding edge for something that might not work. If we want to, say, a 20-year fix for a road, and we're trying something like plastic and blending that in, and it lasts two years, then we look, I would say, kind of foolish with the taxpayers' money, but it's something we're looking at. For example, Mount Hope, where we did the, the crumb rubber out there, that's been out for a couple years, and we did get a grant for that to take care of whatever the additional cost was for that crumb rubber, and we will see how that works in Lansing, if we do get the same length of time or longer compared to traditional asphalt. So, we are looking at innovative treatments, ways that we can preserve our, our road surfaces, and some of that you're seeing, we hadn't ever done the kind of treatments that used to be done, or are done out in the county, on the county roads. Like you see a chip seal, we wouldn't do that just because we're going to have stones flying, but the, the fog seal is kind of that same treatment for the city, and that's an innovative treatment that is less costly than an overlay or repaving. So, some of those type of things, but as far as new technologies, we're always open to that, and again, if we could get some additional funding to test those, we can be a great test bed to, to partner with someone.
Okay.
All right. So, for the 2020 projects, these are major streets that we're currently looking at doing, so that's why I want to say potential. These, if they are federally funded, they have to be, they have to go through tri-county, be on an approved tip. If we change those, there's a tip amendment cycle, and then they, these are, again, if they're federally funded, they go through MDOT. MDOT does the bidding for that and oversees the project. You'll look in, at the bottom there, and that's only like $5.7 million, and you say, wow, why are you spending so much less? Well, on the local street side, we look at those, or we finalize those after the winter, so we see which ones have fallen apart, and we're still in the process of televising our sewers under those streets, so we don't want to do a street treatment and then have the sewers underneath be falling apart, so we kind of try and either avoid the roads that are having sewer issues, or know that going in, so we do the sewer repairs at the same time. So, that is ongoing. We should have a tentative list of streets for the spring by February or March, then we'll bring that back and let you know what we're planning to do for the, for the year. If funding levels change, we get more money from the state, as, you know, as gas taxes, we're, we keep getting a little bit more through about 2021, and, or if we have bid savings, then we will do more streets. If our bids come in higher, and they are starting to come in higher now because the economy's better and contractors are busier, we leave a little bit of a cushion there, so we're not overextending ourselves and, and don't overcommit to projects we don't have the funding for. So, again, there's the list there. You will see that we do not have a lot of CSO next year, so we have kind of, I don't want to say a hiatus, but a little lull where we're starting. We had one of the older projects that we hadn't gotten down to before, the O-34C project. We have O-34D and O-34E, but those are both coming in 2021. We're going to start back up with those, and then we will have probably one to three CSO projects per year for the next 15 to 20 years, and we will, we'll present a schedule soon that shows, at least tentatively, where we're thinking those projects are done. We have tentative years assigned to those, but I'm hesitant to throw those out there right now, because things I know will change as we're trying to coordinate with other projects, Board of Water and Light Water Main, Consumers Project, MDOT Project, so we'll probably present you the, the next five years, which are pretty much, I don't want to say set in stone, but we have an agreement with the state that we need to get those projects done in that five-year window, so those projects are identified, and then we'll probably give you in five-year chunks what we're planning on areas going forward through the end of the sewer separation program.
Okay, are there other, Vice President Spatafor?
Can you remind me, and maybe others, the percentage complete we are on CSO?
We're somewhere between 50 and like 65%. It depends on if you look at acres, or miles of pipe, or cost. We're about halfway through the cost, we have another $250 million or so to go on the sewer separation.
Is that half the sewers in the city, or half the sewers that weren't separated?
That is about half the acres of combined sewers that we have, so some areas were separated.
All right.
So, and really what we're looking at with the state, they don't care about acres, they don't care about miles of sewers, they care about millions of gallons of overflow.
Right.
And, and so, again, they're different metrics, and we can present to you all of those, whichever you'd be most interested in.
It all sounds fascinating. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kilpatrick? One of the ones that I hear quite frequently has to do when we've done a, whether it's a repaving or a mill and resurfacing, has to do with the manhole covers, and the fact that you've got this new paved street, and then suddenly you're dipping down where the manhole covers are, and we've seen that especially on Martin Luther King, where there was work done there. Can, can you address why those are at the level they are, and if, and why we're not, if it's a matter that the neck needs to be redone, why we're not doing that at the same time?
So, the majority of the projects, they do have structure adjusts in there, so they should be within, I think our, our tolerance is within like a quarter inch, maybe three-eighths of an inch. We never try and put them above the level of pavement, obviously, because when we're plowing out there, we don't want to.
Right.
You know, catch our, our plow blades on there, but the vast majority of the projects, they actually, if they mill and resurface, they will adjust the structures down to mill, and then they're supposed to bring them, them back up. So, if there are particular ones that are not, sometimes if we don't.
I can tell you where I hit them.
That's, let us know, and those are, especially if they've been, just been paved.
Yes.
Those are ones that we can go out, and if for whatever reason, we did not have adjustment in the contract, because we thought that everything was fine the way it was, and the way they paved should be, you know, should match up, those are things we can adjust. And what we found in some projects, like if you remember when Michigan Avenue was done, they had, it was supposed to be like an inch, or inch and a half that we took, took off, and so the adjustment was just what that was, just back up. Now, sometimes the, the castings have to be tilted a little bit, because the road's tilted a little bit, and if we do not have the correct adjustment type in there, that, that presents an issue. But unless we're doing a short-term fix, where we think we're going to be coming back in a couple years, those, those large manhole covers should be taken care of.
Okay. Are there other questions on the road projects for Mr. Kilpatrick? Could you just briefly, I saw the announcement from the Public Service Department on the green bins for trash. Could you explain that so that people, because this will be the last council meeting before the new year?
So, two things, as, as we're phasing out the blue trash bags at the end of December, so basically that last week of December, first week of January will be the last time we'll pick up the bags. We did institute a new type, so if people want the smallest bin, 32-gallon, we have every other week service, and that as of today, people can start signing up for that, and we will start delivering those, and that, that cost is half of the every week service, so that's a, a good option for people that would generate two to three kitchen-sized bags in a two-week period, and we're hoping that that'll address the vast majority of the folks that are, are using the bags. It will not address all of those. If people still want a bag option, we do have a private refuse collector that has a, a tag program that's about the same cost as what our bags are, and those, they can, they can sign up for those and still put out a bag, and that company would collect those.
And the containers are, they the same color as, could you?
So.
Because that would be the next question.
They are the same color, they are blue, however, they have a black lid, so that's, so our drivers can distinguish them from the every week service, and they are set out at the, the same week that you put out recycling. So, when you put recycling out, if you have every other week service, you would put your, your every other week card out.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. Did I hear that it was only for the smaller bin, or can you have one of the larger ones and do every other week as well, or?
We only have every other week service. We only have every other week service for these smaller bins with the thought that if you want to go down with every week, something else, you can get these next size smaller bin, you can go from the 96 to the 56 to the 32 if you don't generate as much trash. And then if you don't even generate enough to fill the 32-gallon in a week, then you can go to every other week service.
For the 32?
For the 32 only. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's $24 every three months.
Per quarter, yes.
Correct. All right. Any other questions? We want to thank you very much for coming in and for the presentation and we'll make sure that we have this available throughout at neighborhood meetings. Thank you. Next, we have a discussion and a resolution on the agreement with 54A District Court Judge Retirement Healthcare Benefits. And who's going to present on that? Mr. Tate?
He just gave me a look, but yes, he is.
Good evening, Madam President. So I guess I'll just give you an overview of council to allow me to do so. Obviously, retiree healthcare is a big issue within a city with OPEB and unfunded liability. The city wanted to make sure that we took a holistic approach to addressing that. And one of the issues that came up was judicial retiree healthcare. Generally speaking, after 1998, judicial healthcare followed the bargaining unit in which the judges were operating in. And so in this particular case, I think in 2016, District Court Teamsters went to a defined contribution plan. As such, the city, for retiree healthcare, as such, the city wanted to make sure that we entered into an agreement that followed that defined contribution retiree healthcare plan. And the court, the current court, was kind enough to engage us in that conversation. As a result of that conversation, we came to agreement that after 2016, the judges after 2016 would receive a defined contribution retiree healthcare account based on 4% of their base wages. I fully understand that some of the funding comes from the city and the state. It incorporates both funding sources, so it's just 4% of those base wages. In addition, for those judges that were, that are currently on the bench before 2016 and have the requisite number of years based on when they took the bench, assuming they hit those years, they are eligible for retiree healthcare. And again, that's consistent with the administrative order as well as the District Court, Teamsters District Court CBAs at that time and the fringe benefits. So accordingly, we've entered into an agreement with the District Court 54A to execute a retiree healthcare consistent with the current fringe benefits. So that's where we're at and I'll be willing to take questions, Madam President, as you see fit.
Are there questions? Councilmembers Spitzley?
Thank you, Madam President. Just so I understand, 2016 to today, why it's retro, why the resolution is retroactive back to 2016? Is it because you're, you're trying to be consistent with District Court staff, have the judges? I don't understand why it's 2016.
Sure. Yes, quite simply, yes. That's when the shift went from retiree healthcare to defined contribution. So the administrative order that we're basing our decision on states that judges should follow the benefits of the employees. So in 2016, the city shifted to defined contribution. Accordingly, we believe that the defined contribution account should be funded to win the Teamsters District Court 54A bargaining unit made that switch as well.
Keep going.
Okay, thank you. So it was an administrative order that said, and this, I'm assuming this is a state administrative order?
Yes, yes, Michigan Supreme Court, correct.
Okay, Michigan Supreme Court administrative order suggested that judges follow the same benefits for retiring healthcare as the staff. Is that what you're saying?
That's accurate with one caveat. I just looked at it before I got up here and actually the language is must.
It says must, because you just, all right, it says a must.
So forgive me if I was unclear. It says must.
So why, why has it taken so long then for it to change? I mean, if that was 2016, why, why 20, we're in 2019?
Sure, it's a very good question. And to be blunt, I, I don't know. I can't answer that. But what I can tell you is that when we became, when we were made aware of it, just looking overall at how retiree healthcare is delivered in the city and then being made aware of that administrative order, we wanted to make sure that we implemented procedures to make sure that we're following that administrative order.
I have a couple more questions.
Keep going.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I get, I get, so the administrative, the Supreme Court administrative order would, what's the word, kind of trumps any type of policies or ordinances that the state of Michigan, that the city of Lansing would implement as it pertains to this issue?
You know, I don't want to, I don't want to say more than what the administrative order says, but generally speaking, it says that the, the, the bench must follow the benefits of the bargaining unit in which it operates. So I'm not sure if I'm spot on to what, what you're trying to get at, but.
So, so how does, so how, I guess, how do the judges feel about this? I mean, I see judges in the, in the audience, but you know, for me, if I was under one scenario and then all of a sudden the city of Lansing is telling me, you know, three years later, if I was a judge and I was hired in or appointed in, say, you know, a month ago or three months ago, and I thought it was under, you know, that I was under a certain retirement, and now you're telling me that, or so you say, that, you know, the Michigan Supreme Court is saying we must, that's, that's, I'm, I'm struggling with that one. I am.
Okay, well, I mean, I don't want to be so presumptuous, but to speak for the judges here, I can, I can only say that we wanted to make sure that we were consistent with that, that order. I, I know that I had discussions with the presiding judge and we worked through a couple of issues, so hopefully I addressed some of those concerns that she may have had.
Thank you.
Vice President Spatafor.
So, thank you, Madam President. Mr. Tate, the third, therefore be it resolved, what, let me back up for a minute. We're looking at a resolution in front of us. Have we seen this before?
Since I've been on council, this is the first time I've seen this. I have seen, and I was going to address the question, there is a resolution that goes back into 1984 where the council at that time started to provide healthcare for the judges. And it was approved unanimously by the council at that time. I have not seen any other resolution since that one.
So I guess my question then, why this redlined version is in front of us?
Well, there were some changes from the first resolution that they presented in the packet and they made some clarifications on it, so that's
Got it, okay. So my question, I'm sorry, thank you, thank you for that clarity. My question is subsection, or the, therefore be it resolved, section three seems to change a date. And why is that? Why did it move back two years?
So, so I'll take responsibility for that. Certainly, there was a date that I believed that an individual that had the requisite number of years to get retiree healthcare took the bench. I was wrong. So in order to make sure that we executed the intent of the agreement, I needed to change that date.
So there's nobody, everybody with the, may I use names in this?
Go ahead.
With the exception of Judge Ward, would fall under the old system. Is that correct? And Judge Simmons?
Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry, I, hopefully I'm
How many sitting members of, on the bench will fall under this old system still?
Under the old system, meaning will receive retiree healthcare?
That's correct.
One, Judge Alderson.
I'm done.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm just, I'm, I, you know, I don't like resolutions at the last minute. That's the first thing. The second thing is, I don't like resolutions at the last minute where I have to ask more than three or four questions. That's, I just, I'm, I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but you know, we're getting a redlined resolution that apparently has changed a resolution that we've never seen. So I, 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 I don't like it. I have a ton of questions about the previous resolution and how that impacts this. I cannot, I cannot support this. And it's not that I have a particular issue one way or the other, but I don't like things at the last minute where I can't ask a bunch of questions or have follow-up review. I just, that's, and you know, that's, that's been my policy, so I'm sorry.
Mr. City Attorney, but before I ask your comment, my question would be to the administration and to Mr. Tate. Is there a necessity that this has to be voted on this evening?
Well, Your Honor, excuse me, Your Honor.
I've been elevated, thank you.
I would leave that up to the discretion of, of council. As I, as I sit here now, I don't believe there is, but obviously I'm here to
Because I know this came at the last minute. It came on Friday as we were, you know, had already put out the committee of a whole. And so this is why I'm just trying to make sure that I understand where we are if there are issues that council members want additional information on. So, Mr. City Attorney.
So this has been a negotiation exercise between the administration and the chief judge, who is designated by the Supreme Court Administrative Order to be the bargaining person for the court. And as you heard from Mr. Tate, the standard is basically to be similar to its employees. So that's one of the reasons it's coming up at this point. There had to be this agreement signed, similar to the UAW contract you have today that you have not seen before. So that's, those, both of those processes have taken negotiations. And now this is the last meeting of the year to close out these issues. Both of them, the UAW contract and also this particular situation. So it's the chief judge's responsibility to negotiate and sign the agreement with the, with the local governmental unit. And that's what's going on here, just took time.
So, so just so that I can be clear, you're liking this to our union contracts where the body has, of the union has ratified the contract and all we do is put our stamp on it and we have no other recourse but to approve that?
No, I, I was talking about the process, that's why. It was a similar process.
Okay, I'm just checking.
Where there has to be ratification and then it comes here. I was not likening it to that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, other questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, just a few things. One is supersede, is I think the word you're looking for as far as the Michigan Supreme Court Administrative Order. Is the Supreme Court telling us what we have to do? Would be my question, but it just seems like there's some more relevance there as far as are we going to, you know, do something different? And the other part is, is I would ask for a recusal just because I work sometimes at 54A with the judges.
I believe, sir, if you're asking for a recusal, you're not going to be able to ask any questions or put any input in. So is, are you asking for a recusal?
Yes.
We, we have nothing in front of us right now to vote on, so we'll just be mindful of that. I won't call on you, okay, since you've made that request. Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. So because this happened in 2016, are we subject to any type of penalties or fee penalties from the Supreme Court because we haven't adopted this, this policy? What's, what's, what's the penalty for non-adoption?
As I sit here today, I'm not aware of any penalties. So I, yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Because must sounds very definite.
I agree.
So it would seem to me that if we must, then there is a penalty for not.
Respectfully, I don't want to speculate because I don't know.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just kind of throwing that out there that, do you, are you?
Well, the Supreme Court is
Mr. City Attorney.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The Supreme Court didn't say adopt this healthcare resolution. The Supreme Court, the word must is, the chief judge must deal with the local unit of government in setting fringe benefits. And then it has to be, and I don't have the language in front of me, I think it's in there, the, has to be similar to the rest of the employees of the district court. So the must is, that's the responsibility of chief, chief judge to negotiate with the local unit, which is the city.
Councilmember Spitzley.
So, so what you're saying then is we don't have to adopt the same retirement and benefits as, I'm trying to figure out if this is required or if this is just a suggestion. I don't know.
The requirement is to negotiate with the district court chief judge over benefits. Yes, that's the requirement. And then if there is no, no, there's also a provision for the court to appeal if the local unit doesn't negotiate.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'm looking for where the will of the body is. Is this something that you wanted to set aside to the next legislative body? Comes into effect? Or is this something that you want to vote on this evening? I have Councilmember Spitzley and Vice President Spatafor.
I would like to, I just have some questions and I would like to roll off. You know, it's all, it comes down to a vote, so.
Vice President Spatafor.
It sounds like it's been thoroughly vetted and negotiated. I'm fine moving forward with it. I just, it felt like it was out of left field for me because it's three years old, but at the same time, it doesn't feel like there's a lot that really needs to be done on it. So I'm happy moving forward.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Washington.
I'm ready to vote on it.
Okay. So Councilmember Spatafor, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam President. I would move the resolution with the agreement with the 54A Judicial District Court Judge Regarding Retirement Healthcare Benefits, as amended.
Councilmember Jackson.
I would ask for a motion to be recused.
We have a quest for, to be recused. Councilmember Washington?
I won't be supporting the recusal because there is no way that Mr. Jackson would benefit in any way just because he works there through this retirement healthcare.
Councilmember, Vice President Spatafor.
I'll use Councilmember Washington's explanation for my no-vote explanation.
Okay. All those in favor of the recusal of Councilmember Jackson say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So it looks like you're voting, Councilmember Jackson. All right. With that, we have a motion on the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So motion passes. That's what I heard, so motion passes. Okay, with that, next we have the LEAP Brownfield spreadsheet. Mr. Klein. Mr. Klein. If we can make sure the mic is on and the green light is on, and we're ready to go.
All right, it's ready to go. Good evening, and thank you, Council President Wood and councilmembers. I'm not sure if you want us just to go through and explain a little bit of the spreadsheet?
Yes, that would be great. I know you've had some explanation and development and planning, but since we also had this item out here on the floor with the entire council, we thought it would be good for you to go over it with us as well. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So, it's all color-coded, basically in four different categories. At the last page, it kinda breaks down what that, each category means. So, essentially, the reddish color, the project and the plan are both complete, and all tax is flowing normally to taxing units, and it is not being captured. Any of the green highlighted projects, those projects are active. The, the plans are active in, in capturing, and they're in different stages of completion. The gray projects are ones that have not been completed. Either, you know, the project didn't take place, or it was never fully approved. It might not have received all financing, something like that. And those plans are inactive and do not capture and have never captured. And then any of the yellow ones are plans that are still underway, or they may have been completed, but the capture is not commenced on those.
Could you, do you have the answer to Mrs. Danaway's question that she asked how this rates with other municipalities? Carl, I see.
Yes, I can answer that question. So, in terms of the last 20 years, if you look at all 78 plans, the percent that were of projects for Brownfield plans that were approved is approximately 70%. And that compares very well compared to other communities. But in particular, if you look at where those incomplete projects occurred, it was mostly in the first 10 years, when the project was still kinda finding its legs. Also, there was a downturn in the economy. But if you look at, say, the last five to 10 years, the percent of projects that actually are completed is much higher. It's closer to 90%, which is a very high success rate.
And when we look at the number of plans in municipalities similar to our size, are, are we just about average with what we're doing with Brownfields? Are we above average or below average, or do you have?
I would say we're above average in the number of plans and also the amount of investment and job creation. I think we're one of the leaders in the, in the state, if not the country. I'd have to go dig into, I think we do a very good job of keeping track of our numbers on a yearly basis, and also tracking individual Brownfield plans. So, from that standpoint, I think we have very accurate numbers, too. But to, to compare them to others, you know, I'd be willing to bet that we've done a lot more projects and had a lot higher impact, at least from a per capita standpoint.
And of the Brownfields that have been completed, how many of them are still here in the city and active?
Well, it depends on what you mean by active, but.
I mean, have not closed their doors and are not moved on to someplace else where they've gotten some other type of tax incentive?
As far as businesses?
Yes.
Some of these are real estate, some of them are businesses. They're not necessarily apples to apples. But I mean, if there's specific ones that you're interested in, we could check on those.
I, I would say most of them, because it involves either the, the ones that were completed, either the rehab of a building, or the construction of a new building, or adding on to a building. I can't think of very many if.
Well, I'm looking, the first one I'm looking at is Brownfield 7, which is cap lab. We know that they're no longer there.
Right, but the building's still there.
Yes.
And quite often, we've seen through the last 20 years, that businesses come and go, and plans sometimes are amended, and other times, you know, the property was improved as a result of the program. So, you know, it's still there. I'm not sure if, if there's a current tenant or not, but I mean, most of them, most of ours, if you go and look at the building that was actually done, or the site that was improved, though, it'll be currently occupied.
Okay. All right, are there other questions on this information that's been provided? Seeing none? No other questions? All right, we thank you for this information, and we've got copies back for the public if they're interested in that at this time.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Next is, we're looking for a motion to move into closed session. Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, pursuant to MCL 15.268 Sub C of the Open Meetings Act, I hereby move that we recess into closed session for strategy negotiation sessions connected with a negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement, as requested by the city, and to discuss with our legal counsel pending litigation when, with, during which an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the city.
And you did the workers' comp claim. That's the workers' comp, okay, thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Washington? Councilmember Hussein? Councilmember Dunbar? Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Garza?
Thank you. We're moving into closed session, and we'll be back out when we're done with that. Thank you.
It'll always be on the first, Thursday?
Yep. And it'll be there at the cemetery office.
And you'll come in at 12?
Yes, they're gonna maintain the building, and they're gonna do utilities, and maybe some people know, just know a little bit. So, they, they're good with that. We appreciate it. But yeah, the, the first meeting, the January meeting, we're gonna start a half an hour earlier, if we don't do a potluck. So, you know, if we can make it, we'd love to, and you don't have to worry about bringing anything except yourself.
How is that building laid out?
It's not bad. It has a lot more to it than I really ever realized, just as soon as I went in there. And it's in pretty good shape, really.
Have a main office, is there separate offices?
The main entrance area is like one big office, and we're partitioned it off to some extent. And then in the back, there's two bathrooms and a utility area, and there's a public bathroom off to the east or west side. And the old vault where they kept the records is fireproof. And there's shelving there for storage, so we're gonna take the things that we store at my shed and move home there. So, it's pretty much, and then we call the great food or. And I don't have to dispose it to my place anymore. So, I'll take those all by little.
Well, if you ever get a chance to move, I have my shoe cellar, and, and, and if you ever, what we're looking for, maybe furniture.
We thought about that, and we were gonna go there. We thought about going there for computers and stuff, and then they were advised not to, because what gets turned in there usually is meat and death, as they put it. And then also, you have a greater risk with, um, drugs and vaccines and all of that. And we thought we would go there for some furniture and things like that. But there's another nonprofit, uh, Lansing Community, or Michigan Community College Association nonprofit, uh, Chesna. And they're moving, and they don't wanna take a lot of their stuff with them. So, they're donating a lot of their office supplies and furniture and stuff to us. So, we're really fortunate with that, we're not really quite much of a. Got well. I hope so.
Does it have to be dragon, like, ancient uranium?
Yep, yep.
Do they have a, do they have a refrigerator there for you?
No, um, we brought in a bed first, and I picked up one of those electric hot water pedals. And we brought in, it's good, uh, things, things like that, will have covers and such. If we decide we need equipment and expensive basic appliances. But the girls, well, actually, the girls concerned, a couple of guys that are volunteers, they're not gonna do much more than a snack, because it's a eight, eight to twelve, twelve to four shed. So, it's not like they're shut down for lunch hour, taking lunch break.
Now, is there something on the door that it's made?
There will be, uh, we'll have all the information inside. The city is making a sign that will go out on that post for Harkins Month, that says, "We're volunteers working there now." And that we put our hours in. And then we're getting a sign made that'll go on posted, the three posted signs, you used to say, City Cemetery Office. That one will now say Cemetery Courtesy Office. So, it's gonna take a little time to get all the cities to follow the place, but it very works. It works.
That thing ever gets something regarding. Or the Miller girl in, um.
The argument.
Why, why do you?
For it, yeah, we're gonna have to do that. She's not gonna do anything. Don't we have to spend all of our next seasons' money redoing that? It's unfortunate. But it works. Once in a while, we did step.
How much, but she still uses her services, don't you?
Not since all that happened, we have it over, using the Grand Lanty.
Did she recognize the fact that she did, you know, owe?
Yep, and also took use publicity laws, and she took use financial laws, which always threatens to drop with the Grand Lanty instead of her.
Is it how much money you're talking about?
It was $18,000 to Grand Lanty.
So, how much was the damage?
Oh, $2,000.
But did she, did she have to report to some, actually, rooms?
There is a, there is a, um, company out of the, it's a social, that's a very tough people. And maybe it's below, but we could listen if she got more, maybe a billion dollars or so, and she did that. But, uh, down for a living or?
Oh, basically, what we do is all, how you put your job?
He wouldn't have.
Did that become personal?
A little bit missing in the city.
Yeah, it did start to be.
I'll show you.
That was part of the reason why we let it slide, and even was because it wasn't gonna be in the government.
I'm sorry.
Yep, exactly.
So, have you got the publicity, uh, your journal regarding the big move?
Um, I did a 500, or a point that ran on the other Sunday, and it was on. Not in print, no. And then, um, you know, it's on our Facebook, the last time I checked, it would be, it started with over, like, 600 views on our Facebook about it. This is probably a whole, very central, you know.
So, we, did you get more of that stuff fostered, you know, more meetings?
Yeah, we did a little of that. Uh, 9,786 people. Started towards the other. So, we're, we're here for donations, or we're working on it, too, and we did the evening Tuesday on Facebook. So, that's something that I have to. There is a guy in the armor who got tested for the first enough poison exposure. And he was gonna make the contribution.
Well, the sheets aren't out yet, that's why I'm breaking up, so. Yep.
But he's still going, as well. Project's done.
Who's gonna tell you about this?
Like, always donate, and then you.
You. Yep.
Because I can tell you everybody, and I wasn't sure what job. You were the one that said, "It's an hour, it's a different spring."
How about you, baby? They yellow sheet, 'cause the government would be, would be ahead of the meeting, so this is where you would say.
All the topics to be addressed?
I wonder if that.
Karen? Yep.
So, parking mostly, what about you?
I'm pretty aboard it, Jessica. Hey, how you doing?
Yeah. True, that's you. Well, I mean, I have, I personally have a spot, and I have some great things, so I will need one of these passes, but. Yeah. You live on the east side, right?
We're downtown, across from the statements to be there.
Yeah, well, I saw you there when someone punched a. Rescue. Yeah. Something's in the station, I usually, says, "Kyan," I remember, and it's a.
What, where they replaced that window downtown?
Oh, they haven't. Yeah, I made some calls, but I didn't end up writing it. But also, you never know where, where it could be.
Do you have any, uh? Okay. City Council, she won't pick up the phone, or something like that, I can do it.
Is everyone else returned your call?
Yeah.
So, is the question, smokes or have smokes?
Smokes. Have smoked, I'm pretty sure it would be everybody, but, I don't know.
Not good. George, George Ray, he's the one who didn't inhale, so then.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think it's, uh, I think it's split four, three at the moment.
Some of them said they did. Oh, I'm excited to read this, it's interesting.
Just kinda like a little.
Yeah.
Grab that next to the story for curiosity.
That was Willie there in the debate? Kind of questions.
It's this story about, like, the future of marijuana, 2024.
Yeah, it's kinda like, what, what's the industry gonna do, something like an answer?
Yeah, they're having me do something sort of like that, and like a blurb for.
Who was moderator?
No, no, who was? It'll be on Wednesday. Not really a lot related, but that was kinda just another, you guys really tackled it with the, you, we didn't mention, you know, the, the.
Oh.
That was the question I definitely wanted to set out.
Yeah. I do think, when he told me that he might have been guessing conservatively, because the TV station did his story later. He didn't tell him something different, but he did sort of. Say that he thought it could be sort of a problem.
Early in this, man, I've heard.
Tires have a sign without it. Unfrendishes and then. Carol said, "Sit down, I'm not done."
I've heard that they, but he was probably.
Wish we had a marijuana beat reporter.
He was.
I mean, there's, there's so many beets that we should have and we don't, so I guess it's just a different issue.
I think we should do this, the city people, I think we could do more-
Freep should have been studied.
I think we're lacking business coverage, if we have anybody dedicated to the job, we could have had another person that's working, but.
No, so that's, you know, Ryan, if you give your point of view on Russian.
I said that to a space, so I don't mind reading it. I think he's got a lot to learn and he's not likely to do it.
Well, I said, well, you know. Okay. He's just looking smiling.
He's part of the social democratic, so marijuana.
But he was with the-
Oh, he's employed by?
What you said about his forty jobs?
Yeah, he's employed now by some nonprofit. Was with the university.
He was, I'm surprised.
He did last one on the university.
So, I don't know, your vice editor is a better candidate.
They should know. I think I left my body for a little bit. I was like, did you see?
Every word's different. There's a lot of beats, you know, we need to follow up.
But I was so upset.
He's going to have a very hard sign.
And I never called down. So I just, it went so, it went so long, I was like, it isn't my birthday.
That's the social democratic.
But he got most of it.
Yeah.
So, was that, you know, like-
He does so much value issues.
Percentage of his word, it's not his whole word.
He's got the whole, he got it all the way down here, green law.
Yeah.
Here's a little prosecutor decline charges in that, in the high school truck.
Oh, I'm not sure if I did, I wasn't at our pitch meeting this morning. Oh.
I'm just saying, I know, you know, I know most of the people that are doing that, what their aim is. It's not what it is.
I mean, I think regardless of your political views, it's a free speech thing.
I just heard that, I heard that it's kind of like a stage. Had done some similar thing in the past, I guess.
Oh, in the Shindig. Something happened similarly when I was in Ohio and I don't know that I was, so I filed a lawsuit.
If you remember Randy, who was the movie industrialist? That was the first, something to go with it.
Yeah, but that sounds like Randy.
All the bad patients, tell them we need a copy.
We grabbed Eddie. Once he said he was back in town. So, we're going to do an outreach of voter registration, some of the clerk's office. Be the interviews today. Yeah, so the clerk's office, we do a lot, a lot of these. Working with the mayor's office, we have to go in there and reach out to all the churches. Sunday morning will be, we're, voting from home. Well, we're looking for, yeah, the volunteers can do that as well. Like Robin Smith is going to help with that. The fair just said that, like, we'll be at the Sparrow Hospital for patients, registration voter, you know, like, each chick can hit the head, like, it's their biggest employer and we can do it in the winter. It's warm in his side and we got, we reached last few days.
Okay, if we could call the meeting back to order, Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I would move a resolution ratifying the UAW Local two-two-five-six collective bargaining agreement, a three-year agreement spanning from October first, two thousand nineteen to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, with a raise for three percent, three percent, and two point two five percent in the first, second, and third years respectively. Additionally, members of Local two-two-five-six would receive, upon ratification, a one thousand dollar signing bonus for all full-time employees. And effective January first, two thousand twenty, any new hires into Local two-two-five-six would no longer receive retiree healthcare, rather a healthcare savings plan.
All right, we have a motion. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Vice President Spatafor.
Madam President, I move the resolution approving workers' comp claim settlement number two-zero-six-two-eight-seven-six-dash-zero-one-one-four-five.
We have a motion, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. This time, we will be adjourned and we will be back here for our council meeting in fifteen minutes.